The Affordable Care Act then said, in addition to the blind, aged, disabled, pregnant, thirsty mothers, caretakers for the disabled, indigents, we're going to add the able-bodied population to Medicaid, those that are able to work that aren't disabled. What has happened is our population exploded, but states were given a deal. Instead of in this bottom quartile, forty percent match to sixty percent federal dollars, they were given nine to one. Federal government on an able-bodied population, somebody's able to work, it's the federal government pays it nine dollars and the state pays it one dollar. So when you see here in a minute, I get through some charts where it shows like California, while they have taken and exploded the able-bodied population, they've done it because it's to their financial advantage to prioritize the able-bodied population above the historic population, because they got nine dollars for every one dollar they spent. And what was happening, it was with the way that Medicaid was growing, we were prioritizing those who are able-bodied above those that were indigents and disabled. All right. People, they're talking about, these are people, this is CBO's numbers, they're saying these are people that will no longer have Medicaid coverage. So let's go through it. One point four million of those that the CBO says are going to be off of Medicaid are illegal aliens. Now Josh, that doesn't happen. Here in a minute, I'm going to show you a chart from California as the very worst offender. California, the nine dollar to one dollar ratio, has learned to milk the system, their increase of how much Medicaid dollars were coming to them, almost to fix the financial hole, when the budget committee was looking at it, if we could just restrain what California was back to the 2021 numbers, before they figured out this ability to take the federal tax dollars, your dollars, and be able to use it for other purposes. Okay? That's one point four adults are illegal aliens. When you hear CBO talking about millions, four point eight of them are able-bodied adults. Josh, what we're talking about here, people are able to work, and what the requirement is now with the one big beautiful bill, Clinton, like Clinton era work requirements, is for the four hours on average, by studies, spend playing video games or watching TV, if you're replaced out of either going to increase your skill, increase your skill, or do community service, or get a job, then you'll remain on Medicaid. But if you choose not to do that, that's four point eight million, but choose not to admit one or four hours a day, or community service four hours a day, or go and prove your skill, get an education, four hours a day. Clinton era life work requirements. Okay? Now, let's talk about the other one point three million CBO wants to add to the numbers. Under the Biden administration, there was a two-year time period, because remember what historic Medicaid population is, is for a litmus test of how much money you make. For two years under the Biden administration, the reason why the hawks take us forward, like part of the growth, they weren't doing income eligibility checks for two years. So what we did in the one big beautiful bill was, we said, you have to prove to us that you make below that dollar figure. Now, I know some of you in this room are being honest, you know people who purposely reach a cap salary, and then they ask for the other to pay in cash, so that they can not trip the threshold. I'm watching people nod their heads, and we all know it happens. That's true, but it's wrong. We're not even talking about that. We're just talking about people that lie their income, that you can discover that they're skirting systems. Okay? This, we're talking about the kind of people that are making songs, highlights stories, that are making millions of dollars a year, and they're receiving, you know, food stamps and Medicaid. Y'all do know, you've read those stories in the last ten years. Oh, absolutely. They'll do, they'll do a Google search, the people that have learned to game the system with cash payment and hide what their real earnings is.
Walmart.
She has a question.
Walmart.
About that. All right. Okay, here we go. We're going to speak through this. This is more dollar for dollar figures on how Medicaid is still going to grow. Dollar for dollar facts, Medicaid is still going to grow. There's a fifty billion dollar fund now in the one big beautiful bill for any concerns for people who kept talking about, we had a few members that were concerned they couldn't go back home, talked about work requirements, they said, we want more money to be able to give for the hospital service providers. So in order to get those votes, for those, I don't know, it says ten, fifteen members, or five, five, two hundred something members voted for this, they plus up a twenty-five billion dollar program that every state gets a percentage of, twenty-five billion. In addition to that, another twenty-five billion based on need. Fifty billion dollars, just for those that are deprived, that at the rate of inflation is not enough growth, there's another fifty billion dollars, it's going to be applied to hospitals and other Medicaid service providers. This is the Money Lumberjack scheme on page eighteen, if you want to take the time to read it, this is how California signed up illegal aliens. This is the balance, for those in the room that care like I do, or anyone else mind, I was making the news and holding up the bill, trying to make the numbers match, because I could be concerned about what were headed in my nest as a nation. The blue represents, so this is balance, zero is here, this represents what CBO said is there's a deficit. CBO says there's a three, three point four trillion dollar deficit, ten-year effective one big beautiful bill. The budget committee said that CBO's numbers, the budget committee, of using a growth assessment of one point eight percent per year is not based in fact, it's in recent history. And so what we said was, if you look at recent history, I'll show you the next chart, hang on, well, yeah, the next chart, we'll bring this back to you in a second. Right? In recent history, prior COVID, our economy and Trump administration were growing two point eight percent. Under Biden, two point seven percent average, the, the, since nineteen, since World War II, our average has been three point one percent. We said on the budget committee, two point six percent growth, and yet this is what CBO said would grow year over year, one point eight percent. When you, I'm about to bring this chart back up, when you look at the difference between how much revenue comes in, if we're right, two point six, and CBO is wrong, it's another, don't let the numbers confuse you, the difference between these two is two point six trillion more in revenue. From moving from one point eight year-over-year growth to two point six year-over-year growth, just the numbers happen to be the same, in terms of, the, the, just match. Two point six trillion is this area right here, means how much more revenue we're coming in if we grow two point six versus one point eight. All right, so that's why we came to the budget committee, came to two point six trillion. Okay? So by looking what it just showed you, balance, the balance was not flat-strided there. To be able to ten-year projection, the debt deficit has been, I've been super fixated on it. You see the little blue area? That blue area represents the change that once it went through the Senate after, some of us held it up in the House to get the numbers to match. By the work that myself, Chip Floyd, Ralph Norman, Andrew Clyde did over the, over the weekend, I didn't sleep very much, some of you may remember where I held up the bill, we were able to close this gap, that dark blue area. When it went to the Senate, when it went to the Senate, they did some modifications. When it came back, because of those modifications, because of the numbers, that's why I lost. That's why I brought in the press conference with the President, and we sat down, and we had a conversation about my concern to make sure we got the balance, and everybody in the room, okay? People say mine, there were a number of us that were, are concerned, said, Mr. President, we've got to make this balance. CBO would not support the tariffs, okay? It wasn't in the bill. But what I want you to see is, after that meeting, and after we, even up until three A.M. with the Speaker, we're negotiating, getting some things, some things I can't even fully tell you at this point, about significant assurances that we're going to see play out over the next many, many months, okay? Those significant assurances, that the President saw what we saw, on some issues that we had, we then, once those decisions were made, and we saw how we could get there, we agreed. Here's what I didn't want to have to rely on, was, was the three and a half years left of the ten percent tariff period, but we ultimately did. So, the President can't control that, for the next three and a half years, he can control that we will pay a ten percent average tariff. That balances the one big beautiful bill. What happened, so you say, well, Josh, what happens to the? What happens to those tariffs continue past that three-year window? The Democrats. What happens? What happens if the tariffs continue past that three-year window? You'll get additional one point four trillion of the ten-year window in savings, that's cream. That's a lot. What happened when Trump left and tariffs in place? Did Biden reverse it? No. So there's a good chance that we'll even get your own balance, but I like a one more pad here for me, for you, for what I told you when I ran, because there's always unforeseen circumstances that can happen. And I wanted that pad to be there, so that we can, I'm going to say this, if we can hope this budget's flat this year, you see this with the bullet point, we get an additional five hundred billion dollars, if what some of us are pushing for right now in the preparation process, that we hope this year, next year, the budget's flat, we get another five hundred billion dollars, that was included in the discussion for one big beautiful bill. All right. Um, what's left? Look, the rest of it is detailed, I might point on taxes, what we did on the fiscal, I'd love to go to this, because I want to hold on to security, I'd love to tell you what we did on the border, seven hundred mile fiscal barriers, but we need to get some questions. So, John, we're going to honor everybody, you get, you know, the way that the First Amendment is preserved around the Congress on the floor, you get about a minute, minute and a half, where nobody can stand there and think, you know, more time, get their speeches. So, minute and a half, and John, you can call me the first person that is, then I'll go. All right. So she's, she's asking about the law enforcement provisions relative to what President Trump is doing on his rooftop in Dallas, in San Diego, is that correct? In Los Angeles. So let me say this, by the Constitution, the ten-square-mile area of Washington DC is under one of the eighteen inch rampages that Congress has opened. Okay? For years ago, before I got in office, they turned that over by statute to Home Rule, about, oh, how many weeks ago? The congressional district to the north of us, Ron Estes, he has an intern in DC, this kid gets shot and killed.
What about the nineteen other states?
So sir, you're not going to continue to do this, we're going to have a vacation. You're going to leave, you're going to go to your truck. So, so, so. No, I'm not, but, but, but what I'm trying to make sure you understand is constitutionally, we have the authority to veto Washington DC, what happened in LA, so the President, he's a chief law officer.
No, he's not.
Yes, he is, by the Constitution.
No, no, no.
He's a law officer. So, he is, he is the executive, highest executive authority, the role of the executive is to make sure our law is executed. So, as also, he has given the opportunity in the Constitution, he has also given the opportunity in the Constitution, now, this is laws, this is what laws. So, so, according to the Constitution, according to the Constitution, he is allowed to put down rebellion, to ensure law and what preserves, what, what, what happened in the burning and the fire years ago, that was allowed to continue, that was allowed to continue, that's what the President has sent in people into LA. Sorry, you're not continuing yourself, you can leave, you can leave. So, relative to what happened in LA, the looting, the burning, all that, they caused that, millions of people.
Self-defort, self-defort.
By, by the National Guard, that was stopped. Now, what maintains prosperity in America, in terms of the ability to even have rational conversation, you have to have the rule of law, you have to have law enforcement, that everyone understands you're not about the law, and if you want to have your First Amendment right, you have it, but you're not allowed to, to bring havoc, burn people's buildings down, steal property.
That's the exception.
So, all right, that's what I'm saying.
First of all, I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you.
When you ran, you portrayed yourself as a, someone who was trained by Senator Cooper, Dr. Cooper. Dr. Cooper always made sure that he had rational discourse and got along well, even when people had really profound ideological differences. Granted, it was a different time in Washington.
Yes.
What are you doing to try to bridge that gap with the Democrats, with the progressives, to try to make our discourse a little more humane?
Yeah.
Much like you said in the very beginning?
Yes.
What are you doing there, to try to bridge that?
I got magic wand, I just wave it. I try to operate kindness to people. Now, but I'm also a person that was raised in government, and I hate when people try to manipulate control of them. So what was happening here a long ago, was someone trying to control this, helping to deter atmosphere. What I'm trying to say is, so what I'm giving your response to is, is striving to operate kindness and justice, but also, whatever you, whatever you tolerate, you empower. I spent years with Tom Cooper. Tom Cooper to create an environment where everybody could listen and be rational, wouldn't tolerate people screaming and yelling, it just wasn't, it wasn't part of the standard operation. So, what I try to do is, I'm as concerned as anybody else who worked in Washington DC, you look at my score in the mix, but I'm also someone, if you talk, speaking of the House, if you talk to a number of people, I always strive to be kind and make sure that I'm teachable. And some of you may think, well, you're so hard, then how can you teach them? If you can give me facts, and tell me where I'm wrong, and my facts are wrong, I always want to be teachable.
Do you have lunch with the Democrats?
I'm sorry?
Do you ever have lunch with the Democrats?
Um, I work out with my children, um, and we're friends.
That's what I mean.
And, and, look, hopefully, for some people in this room, that you would listen to me and you would say, oh, he's this, or he's that, I, I hope that you see, when I build something strongly, I'm independent, I will hold processes up, and I try to live by my conscience, and by the Constitution. Somebody may disagree with me, that I have a very Madison, Tom Cooper, I spent years with him, does he follow the law? So, I spent years with Dr. Cooper, and, well, I'm just, he asked me, if you tried to portray yourself as Tom Cooper, I spent years with him, so I'm ashamed of what he taught me.
Hi, my son is a recipient of Medicaid from Afghanistan.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You're a part of the traditional population that, that needs, go ahead.
And I, I understand that there may be problems, because I don't see it, as you mentioned, other people might see it, you are supposed to report that, there's a way to report it in the law, so that should be okay.
Yes.
And I do see why people are wanting that, because there is such a low wage, everybody's going out, so what are you doing to make sure you might have free or, 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 or healthcare?
Yes. Yeah, so, look, I, I think that the only way forward for us to stop this, this growth of government, that is choking out the affordability of healthcare, whatever the government, Tom Cooper used to say, whenever the government tries to make things affordable, it makes it too expensive very well. If you'll watch over the last fifty years, the more government's gotten involved in the healthcare front, cost has gone up, the more government's gotten involved in colleges, tuition increases. So, what I believe the fix is, I've believed this for many years, is you have to restore the direct relationship between the patient and their doctor or physician. So a number of different provisions that are out there, that, that people are getting creative with, monthly payments to allow you to come in, does anybody utilize the monthly payment aspect, where you can sign up for fifty, sixty, seventy bucks a month on just your normal family medicine? So those are some really unique ways, health savings accounts, which was kind of pointed to, I, you know, we'll, we'll have some disagreement in our office, I think there is absolutely a place for the, the type of organization, some of them right now, they may not be faith-based, but they're not insurance, but they were applicable in the 2014, where you group pool, and you're able to cut, what, he's using a thousand-dollar agreement, to like two and three hundred dollars to cover a family, um, there's one called Christian Share Ministry that falls in that category. So, it is not by the more government intrusion, when I worked for Tom Cooper, who was a healthcare expert, and I'm not claiming to be, he had the other alternative plan, before the Affordable Care Act came in, and what his plan was, was to restore high deductible policies, I'm all in favor, with a very good opportunity, catastrophic loss, and, and high deductible policies where you can self-insure, so that you're not utilizing insurance for every these maintenance type thing that you're going to the physician's office for, I believe has the best opportunity to create that policy.
Okay, so, two more questions.
Well, first of all, thank you for this town hall, I appreciate it. My concern more is now the people's safety and welfare, like out on the streets. So, when I get approached in my vehicle by, screaming in, waving rifles, and wearing masks, or to identify themselves, the Catholic doctrine law still exists? You know, the ones that allow people to use reasonable force, including deadly force, to protect themselves against intruders in their own homes. It's been said that they're receiving, I'm talking about ICE, a fifty thousand dollar fine on fines, and getting a hundred thousand dollar salary for that. I'm a retired school teacher of twenty-five years, and retired two years ago, right at about forty-nine thousand dollars a year. There seems to be something wrong with that picture. Also, what kind of training are those behind, is the law, civil law, or change that they watch, or is it all about man abuse and hash damage? I don't know, I'm very concerned about that.
All right, look, they're not going to take, because they want to be humble, I'm sure, a lot of enforcement officers in this room, a lot of enforcement officers in this room?
No, they're not wearing masks.
She is, now, she did ask a question about salaries, not, not even a lot of enforcement officers. So, I can't, I can't talk, I can't talk, I can't answer the question. So, so, what you don't, you have to understand is, law enforcement, they have something unu- unique to them, to a greater level. I had death threats, okay, but I don't face what these guys face every day. I do not face it, and to improve people.
I respect them, I respect them, with all of them respect, I'm not the people that cover their faces, that don't find themselves.
That doesn't work, those are like drain管.
No, they're not. That's great, that's hard to say.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm trying to say is.
I'm not a woman of power.
Now, I, 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 I encourage you to spend a lot of time understanding what, how the cartel operates, and understanding how they hang, um, red trees with, with clothing items outside, and the trend they're following, and the, and the, the behavior, the jihadist type activity, cartel operators, and if you're asking law enforcement to be in a situation that is criminal help, trend they're following, and you're asking these people to subject their families for reprisal, murder, what you're asking is, is for these people to be put into such a vulnerable position, that their families get in danger. So I understand your concern, but you've got to understand that these people appreciate your position as well. I'm talking about the people that are up against the cartel, dealing with the criminal element.
I want to, I want to ask you about Israel, you're from Israel.
Okay.
I think that we get filthy information from there, and, and, or, or news, and I'm wondering if there's anything in there, and I did watch your YouTube on it, is there any thing that shocked you that you think?
There's a genocide, it's way.
Like Gaza?
There is a, so, everybody's, their eyes are on Gaza, to the south of Israel. What people are not talking about, I highly encourage you to start paying attention to what Tim O'Leary is talking about. I'm involved in a group that is trying to revisit this concept of what's happening in Syria. Syria to the north of Israel, there are seven hundred and fifty thousand people right now. A thousand, what we believe is ten thousand of them have been murdered. You want to talk about cartel, like captivity, jihadists, I've seen the videos of grandparents with their one-year-old infants shoved off buildings, bullets saved. This is happening, nobody in the international community is talking about what's happening in Syria. Sixty miles to the inset across the, the border of Israel, the, the Dru- the, the Druze, hundred and fifty thousand of them reside in Israel, there's seven hundred and fifty thousand that are encircled right now, what I believe is Syria's current government, after Assad was removed, Al-Shar, known as Jellani, who six months ago was al-Qaeda, ISIS, is now put a suit tie on, and so, and I was involved in the last several weeks, had conversations with, with Ambassador Huckabee, with the administration, I'll have him on, get to DC, but I am concerned that what we're doing relative to Syria, that we are creating an environment where we're trusting someone who is, until a bunch of us got involved a week or two ago, and I'm not even on the board of the Harris Committee, trying to highlight to the administration, they were trying to starve these people out of water. They're encircled, there are siege, there are seven hundred and fifty thousand Druze and Christians that are being murdered, and the international media is not paying attention to it. And, and, so, the victim cards being played by Hamas in Gaza, and the Muslim Brotherhood is having a heyday executing people in Syria, it's all the Muslim Brotherhood, we've got it, and the international community is so fixated over here, they don't see the babies and daughters that are being raped and murdered in Syria. You guys, do I have time for one more? Or, where about going next, in case somebody has, what's the?
Wagner, Wagner.
Y'all, we have a tight schedule today, that's why I'm trying to give you all the time you can to. Wagner, what time's this coming?
Uh, sure. Thank you, appreciate a lot.
God bless you, thank you so much, can we take the handouts back?
Thanks.
I'm watching the, 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 the natives are restless, the unemployed finally woke up, the Democrats finally woke up from their stupor, from their drunkenness overnight, and they came out in little larger numbers in this town hall by US Congressman Josh Brashin. Yes, there was more Democrats, this one started at eleven o'clock, so, they weren't awake on the other two, and so now we got more Democrats, more liberals, and so it's going to be building up, as the news gets out of what he's presenting, of how good of a job he's presenting in his presentation, the Democrats are going to get the word, spread it around, and they're going to come out more and more as every town hall takes place. Tonight's culmination, we got one more in Wagner, but about fifteen, twenty minutes away, then it culminates tonight at six o'clock in Bartlesville, Oklahoma, and as you well know, we street preachers own Bartlesville, we have shut down not only the homo event, the drag queen event, but we have shut down their local chapter of the sodomites. Yeah, Oklahoma's for Equality Chapter in Bartlesville has been shut down by the street preachers. Yes, sir.
I'm just hearing all these people that are making all that noise.
Correct. Well, I was at the other two, too, and, yeah, they weren't awake yet, now they're, the unemployed, it took them a while to wake up.
Lady was standing over here videoing it, she's an absolute.
Is she loco, or? Oh, okay. Yeah. As you notice, it took a while for them to get at least twenty or thirty to show up, so I can only imagine Wagner might have more, I don't know what kind of room they'll have capacity-wise. I, I predict they'll be spreading this around in their networks, social media, and, and they're going to try to.
But who's paying?
Right.
These people are paid.
I agree, yes.
The officer was over here, he's getting paid.
I agree, and they're going to probably get wilder and louder, and so, or at least try to.
They do not go push this to.
I know. I know. I agree.
Just like this lady here, she's going away.
Yeah.
Because she was asking.
See, I don't know, they all walk out like they're mad, they're shaking their head, what do they expect him to do? I mean, I mean, he's not the chief executive, he's, he's only one man in Congress. He can't solve all their problems and wave a magic wand.
They don't want to solve the problem.
I know, they want more of the problems.
They want more chaos.
Yes. They sure do. They cause the problems, then act like they have the solutions to the problems, which means more government, as the vicious cycle.
And what's it gonna do to them? They're all gonna be living, let's see what they were.
Yeah, 10 or 11, from one category to their category.
Good shirt.
Well, thank you, thank you, sir.
Three top items on the exit polls was the shutting the border down and.
They're all gonna be living down there.
Yes, they're all gonna be living down there, correct.
There's some wild stats on those things. There's some wild stats on us, like, what's the problem, sitting around doing nothing, collecting.
Correct.
Our tax dollars. Or if one guy said, well, if half the country realizes that all the work they're doing is going to the other half of the country that's doing nothing, well, they might decide to quit work when we all fall apart.
Correct. Every country who follows that example falls apart.
Something like ours, Trump or agents, you know, is part of it, where she's saying, oh, they're taking these poor illegals out, you know?
Those poor illegals aren't no business for you.
Correct. California almost passed a bill to say, did anybody pick up kids from school or they take here? Don't have to be parents, but that's the way I did. They would have, they didn't pass it, well, they tabled it.
Wow, that even came on the floor.
They just tabled it, so it's still.
That's crazy.
But, there, there were people out there who were saying, if they pass that, it gets all out of that state.
You better believe it.
Because the pedophiles are predators.
Yeah, they're everywhere.
That's a, that's a pedophile's.
Yes, sir. Are you local?
Yes.
Don't guide Perry, start working.
Oh, he's sheriff's office.
So, if we can actually start growing things like a, a, a pendulum, grow things, instead of growing things at, at snail's pace, and 3%, 4% return.
Tell Guy Perry to start working.
I will, sir, have a good night.
Start working. We'll see if we see the same protesters, Democrats, at the next one, see if they're getting paid. Yep, paid protesters. Uh, that was Muskogee, Oklahoma Town Hall, US Congressman Josh Brashin, one of the most conservative US congressmen in the Congress, and they finally, the liberal Democrats finally woke up, the unemployed, you can tell they're a bunch of unemployed idiots, useful idiots, probably being paid like Guy said. See you in a, oh, 45 minutes, 2 o'clock at Wagner County, so we got 45 minutes. See ya.